You know.
Welcome everyone to our Williamsport City Council meeting. It is Thursday, January sixteenth. We are in trade and transit through third floor. Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Randy Allison, followed by the flag salute.
Heavenly Father, we come tonight with the concept and the idea and the realization that this might be a particularly pivotal year in our city government. We have a lot of issues to deal with this year. Many of them are overarching. Everything is getting our city on a sound financial basis. But beyond that, we need to decide where we're going to have our city government located. And we have contracts to take care of. We have agreements with other entities that we need to to conclude with. And Lord, we also have the deep desire and the understanding that every decision we make affects sometimes thousands within our city, sometimes a few, but regardless of how many, Lord, we want to do the best we can for our city and its people, which we are a part of. Lord, we ask for your wisdom. We ask for your strength and to help us do these many things that lay before us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, approval of city council meeting minutes from January second, two thousand twenty five. Is there a motion in a second?
So move.
Motion in a second. Any comments, questions, changes to the minutes? Here you see none. I'll call the roll on the motion. Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey. Yes. Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion passes six zero. If I mix up the order to my colleagues, sorry. I will jot it down as we were doing it. So we'll see how it goes. Item four, limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests I'm aware of. We're going to jump around to the bottom just a little bit. We will jump to item fifteen, resolution authorizing Bureau of Police to hire two police officers. Is there a motion in a second?
So move.
Motion in a second. Chief Snyder, Assistant Chief Bolt, and our higheres, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. Bring before you a resolution authorizing the Williamsport Bureau of Police to hire two police officers. So respectfully requesting your consideration and confirmation for the following officers, candidates for appointment for with the Williamsport Bureau of Police. Here to my immediate left is Dalton Level, and then next to him is Mason Merrill. These candidates have completed all requirements for employment with the Williamsport Bureau of Police. Police Officer Candidate Level will commence his employment on February third, two thousand twenty five, and Police Officer Candidate Merrill will commence his employment on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty five. The difference in the time there is Mason Merrill has to attend the academy. So to give a little bio on them, Candidate Level is twenty nine, is twenty nine years old and currently resides in South Williamsport area. He is the son of Dwayne Level and Mary Louise Hawkeye. Candidate Level is two thousand thirteen graduate of Williamsport Area High School and a two thousand seventeen graduate at Lycoming College with a bachelor's degree in political science. Candidate Level attended the Mansfield Police Academy, where he received his ACT one twenty certification in two thousand twenty. He's currently employed with Lycoming Regional Police Department. Candidate Level will be assigned badge number twenty two on his commencement here with the city. Candidate Merrill is twenty seven years old and is a resident of the Montoursville area. He is the son of Sheila Wilson and late David Merrill. Candidate Merrill is two thousand fifteen graduate of Northeast Bradford School District and two thousand seventeen graduate of Penn College of Technology, where he earned an associate's degree in health sciences and a certi- and a certification as a nationally registered paramedic. He is currently employed with UPMC Susquehanna Regional EMS. Candidate Merrill is currently slated to attend the Mansfield Police Academy and is projected to receive his ACT one twenty police certification in the fall. Candidate Merrill will be assigned badge number twenty six. Enclosed as well is the civil service hiring list that I put in with the resolution. This now puts us up to our full complement at fifty one officers. We were at forty nine. The hiring M will put us at fifty one. So we finally made it to to that compliment. I'll open up the floor if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Chief Snyder. Ms. Mealy, this was reviewed in finance. I don't know if there was any additional discussion.
Unfortunately, Mr. Allison ran the finance.
Oh, Mr. Allison, I'll yield to you for the couple of agenda items for finance. It slipped my mind.
Yeah, we discussing was was brief. You know, it's the standard procedure that we use. We do need to refill the civil service list. Because that's been pretty, that's basically empty now. So but this does bring us up to the compliment that we budgeted for. So that's all I have to say about it.
And just add on to that, we do have one left on the list. As you could see, the civil service list is pretty small. But we do have one left, one left.
Okay.
We are looking at one retirement this upcoming year, at least one that would, that'll be absolute. So.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Allison. Are there other, are there any comments, questions? Open the floor to others. I have a couple I'll make, but.
Welcome.
Mr. Mackey.
Yeah, no, welcome, guys. Could I apologize? Could you give me your first names again? Who's?
This is Dalton Level right here. Next to him is Mason Merrill.
And who's the paramedic?
Mason Merrill.
Okay. Is that, is that a first for us having a police officer who's also a paramedic or?
No, we have another one, but they don't have current certifications. And he hasn't known yet, but I'd really like him to keep his certificate. But that's something we could discuss later. But that's a good thing. He's a well versed in as a paramedic, obviously, fire and.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, no, just welcome aboard, guys. Please be safe out there. And you know, despite what you might think or see in the media, we have a good working relationship with the police and the administration, I like to think at least, and we're here to, we're here to support you in your job. So, you know, if there's anything that we can ever do, run it up the chain of commands and we'll do what we can to keep supporting you and and the important work that you're doing out there. So I appreciate it. I know we all appreciate it. So thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I would, I would piggyback those and kind of briefly talking to you for the thirty seconds before the meeting, you know, a lot of the echo a lot of Mr. Mackey's comments. Be safe. This is a tough profession across the world, right? Not just here. And so I admire you both for stepping up and pursuing that because it's, it's truly a public service and there's really no greater calling. I would make that argument absolutely. Be smart and please let us know what we can do to support you. As Chief will probably tell you, there are times where we're going to be limited in what we can do, whether it's financial constraints or what have you, but you know, I do think what you I mean, it's something you're going to hear and see, right? I don't want to sugarcoat stuff for you by any means, but to John's also point about a good working relationship, you know, I can, I'm not a public safety expert. I've learned a lot from having conversations with Chief Snyder about policing and that kind of stuff, and I'm still a novice. I'll fully admit that, but just because we may not be able to do something, it doesn't mean that we're not going to entertain or maybe find a different way to do it, right? So just keep that in mind. We're here to support you as best as we can and as well as we can. Sometimes that will be a challenge, but it's not because of a desire of not wanting to do it and that's usually right. So but commend you, you both, and welcome to fellow Penn College alumnus. I always like hearing that. So any other comments from other members? Bonnie, Randy online?
I have nothing.
No, I don't either.
All right. Here you can see none. Then I'll take the roll call on the vote. Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey. Yes. Mr. Pelisi. Yes. Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Motion passes six zero. Congratulations to both of you, to your families as well. Congratulations, and thank you for the support you're giving them.
Thanks, Captain.
All right, we'll jump to item eighteen. Certificate of Appropriatelyness, one thirty eight Mulberry Street. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. That's okay. I wasn't sure if there was one or not. So I just, it's on the record that way. Mr. Nar, good evening, sir.
Yes. Good evening, President Yoder and members of council. What I present to you tonight is a certificate of appropriating request for one thirty eight Mulberry Street. What they are requesting to do is paint the entire building and place business identification signs on the building. The building color is currently a light green. They are going with a dark hunter green, more of an earth tone color for the downtown. In addition to that, you see the other, the additional pages where there's one, and there's a sign on the front, back and rear. They're going to basically be about the same size. You do have an image showing that it'll read healthy, touch, escape, unwind and restore. That will be a composite, a white composite lettering, as well as the color design on the images that I provided to you, which is pretty much going to be the white background with black lettering, as well as like a light green, I mean, a green and a light pink color flowering.
Thank you, Mr. Nar. Are there any comments or questions on the certificate? I believe you have somebody on Zoom.
I have someone on Zoom. I do have, I do have the sign company here as well.
Okay, so yeah, please. You said they're painting it what color?
It'll be a dark hunter green.
So it's already green. They're just making it.
Yeah, it's just a light green currently based off of the pictures that you see. And what it is, is it's going to be, I know it's hard to see, but here's a dark hunter green is what it's going to be. So the first picture that you have is kind of showing what the dark hunter look will look like. The other pictures with the signage, that's the actual light green that it currently is.
And they're doing a light green for the eyebrows then?
The other.
Yeah, agreed.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Randy, Bonnie, don't be, just, just jump in. I can't see you. So if I don't hear anything, I take that as a no.
Questions?
No, I don't have any.
Awesome. All right, we'll take the vote. Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Motion passes six zero Gary team. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's jump back up then in order. I don't believe there's anybody else from the public or on Zoom here. We'll jump to item five, presentation on two thousand twenty four tax collections. This is non-voting items. I'll open it up for Mr. Mackey. He sent us some reports that are in Dropbox, and he also sent us an email outlining a number of things last week that I think you all should have. And if you don't, that's on me and my bad. Mr. Mackey, welcome and good evening, sir.
Good morning, Council. This is my third meeting here, giving this report with the city. And I'm happy to be here for another three years after this, and we'll see how long I'm going to be here afterwards if the county, the city continues to elect me. This marks another year where my office collected more than what we budgeted for and recorded around eight hundred fifty one thousand dollars of unbudgeted revenue between all the taxes that we do. The numbers I will be quoting are from the two thousand twenty four city budget approved in two thousand twenty three versus the two thousand twenty four collections recorded by my office. These were finalized this month. As a short disclaimer, these are different than the numbers applied by the two thousand twenty four months discussed at the recent budget meeting. Realty transfer tax collected by the registered recorder is above budgeted by ninety nine thousand, six hundred sixty five and seventy six cents. Delinquent taxes collected by the Tax Claim Bureau is above budgeted by three hundred eleven, three hundred seven and nine cents. Earned income taxes formally collected by the municipal school earned income office is above budgeted by one hundred seventy three, two hundred forty nine and seventy two cents. For the record and public notice, the two thousand twenty five collector for this tax will be Keystone Collections. City real estate taxes collected by your city treasurer's office is above by one hundred fifty four, three hundred fifty three and forty six cents. Local service taxes collected by your city treasurer's office is above by eleven thousand, two hundred eight dollars and ninety seven cents. Mercantile and business privilege taxes collected by our city treasurer's office is above by one hundred five, two hundred fifty four and thirty seven cents. These these last two that I would like to bring your attention to and to the attention of taxpayers, as it is these two taxes that I have the most influence over. For more than two decades, sorry, more than a decade, correct, local service taxes has remained stagnant. While city costs continue to rise, since two thousand twenty one, our, our budget has risen by four million dollars. This is about one million dollars a year, a percentage increase of four percent in that since two thousand seven cost, sorry. This taxes remain stagnant since two thousand nine. So we're operating off of revenue from two thousand nine for costs that are almost eighteen years at a date. With an inflation rate of fifty one percent since two thousand seven, we cannot continue to operate off of hard caps. These caps are set by Harrisburg eighteen years ago, and we need our assistance from the representatives in Harrisburg to address and fix this. We do not have control over raising this cap and raising the revenue with this tax unless we have more population. Harrisburg must update this tax, and we cannot afford another year of stagnation. If anyone has any questions about this portion, I will pause here.
Other questions for members?
Nope.
Is there anything that we should be doing to attempt to make that happen?
So this is more to bring the attention of this tax being eighteen years of the same revenue for us. And if there is no population growth, this tax does not change. It is by the amount of people employed by the, employed in the city. And if you look at a lot of other taxes that are hard capped, they don't change over year to year, but costs certainly do go up every year.
And I presume the tax, I know, in fact, but I'll point it out for the record that the tax does not change predicated on the amount of income or the hourly rate or anything.
No, it's, it's strictly fifty two dollars a year if you work in the jurisdiction that levies it. So we can have the same amount of people working every year and have our same costs go up every year, and that will keep putting us more and more in the hole. So since two thousand nine, again, we've been working off of that revenue that has unchanged. So I have spoke with Jamie Flick about trying to address this. But again, we need to work on trying to get more people organized behind him so that he can help us out with this. There's no other questions. I'll move on to the next part here.
Kevin, I do. I have a question. This is Bonnie. I assumed the fifty two dollars was all legally we can charge, right?
It is all we can charge because it is set by Harrisburg as it was back in two thousand seven. They did not put any way to increase that cap in the debt in the tax. So it is purely by the amount of people that are working in the city that that tax gets raised. The revenue will stay steady unless Harrisburg does something or unless more people work in the city.
Okay, since our, our population is shrinking instead of growing, what do you think the chances would be to be able to charge more? And the other question I have, this is across the board in the state, right? Every, every city has this what they can charge, right?
This, this is a hard cap across the entire state. It's fifty two dollars. So Loyal Sock has this tax, I believe, Old Lycoming and South Williamsport all have this tax. So in a sense, the entire area has been working off that fifty two limit since two thousand seven.
Okay, I just, I, that's what we were always told that we couldn't charge anymore because it's, it's the statewide. But the thing that got to me is what you said with if the, the population was higher, we could go more?
If the population was higher, we would get more revenue from the tax by basis of more people working in the city.
Okay, okay. I misunderstood that. I took it in a different direction mentally. Thank you, Kevin.
Not a problem. This is going to be at the Merckham Business Privilege Tax. Prior to two thousand twenty, my predecessor had the good judgment and foresight to bring this tax directly under the control of the treasurer's office. We are barely breaking two million dollars with this tax. This year, we mark three million dollars hitting this tax. Sorry, this year marks the second year hitting three million dollars in revenue with this tax. That's a growth of fifty percent in four years. It's a lot different than, you know, what we just discussed with local service tax. The next thing I want to discuss with this tax is the unenviable portion of my office, which is legal action. There was a comment I heard recently from a taxpayer that this tax is unenforceable. On behalf of our residents, I'm here to show otherwise. And since I've taken office, I have cited eighty seven people and entities for non-compliance with this tax. This year, my office has set aside fifteen thousand dollars for the enforcement of this tax. And in January of two thousand twenty five, court costs were set at one hundred thirty eight dollars and eighty nine cents. For those of us quick at math, this will have calculated up to about a hundred and seven citations. With the way this tax law is written, I can recycle these funds back into the budget so that a hundred and seven is not a hard cap. And I will continue to ensure that things are followed to the letter of the law as had been written for this tax law. There is a strong likelihood that I will be able to go above that hundred and seven by the end of December of this year. The treasurer's office has organized a lot of the effort behind this revenue increase, but business owners can't just look at the city and see taxes. I've talked about a lot of things I'm going to do against those that don't follow, but I want to talk about the stuff that we do have for our, our businesses currently residing here. They need to see the efforts of our police. They need to see the efforts of our firefighters. They need to see the efforts of administration to create environment that is both safe and profitable for them. Along with what I just mentioned, my office is also attempting to act as a resource for local business owners by connecting them with nonprofits and other government agencies that can provide economic incentives and resources. Every business that receives a license from this, from my office, it will be provided the contact information for those agencies that I have done the research on myself. My office is one of three, sorry, I am one of three people in my office, and I cannot always do the research for this myself. I am asking the public and, and council for any research that they can provide and any assistance they can provide in identifying resources for our local business owners so that we can provide it to them on an annual basis along with their license. Normally, this is outside the scope of the tax office, and that's why I'm asking for your help. I have limited time throughout the year, and these programs open and close their periods before I have a chance to find them. Should the public wish to assist in their own findings, they may use the get in touch application on the city's website to submit this to my office. If I have my way, whatever program providers are out there will be so sick and tired of Williamsport applications heading their way that they have no chance but to make one just for us. If anyone has any questions about this, I will pause here.
Any questions from members? You're on, your, your mic's on.
You're on, your, your mic's on. Oh, you wanted to turn it off. Okay. I thought you were gonna say something. Um, no, so yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, I, I, so when you talk about resources for business, I mean, I mean, look, you know, I think you go back on like the minutes for all of that, when all of us have been together. I mean, I think that's a pretty common theme we've talked about is, you know, trying to be as friendly to the business community and whether it's, you know, helping get external resources, whether it's grants, like that kind of stuff. I, I presume you're talking about advertising our, our learner program, for example, where it's applicable. Um, you know, we, we, I, I don't think we can do enough of that. Um, what I would encourage you to do is to tie off with the Department of Community of Development as well, notably to make sure that neither of you are duplicating efforts. Um, because I think that would be.
There's no duplication as of right now.
Well, and, and that's good, but I, I think you need to keep a, an open dialogue to make sure that that doesn't happen. Um, and, and, and so that we aren't maybe I don't want to see confusing the, the private sector, but um, making that process less efficient, maybe for, for example. So it's good. Let's just make sure that we're coordinating.
The main, the main goal is to tie in all these organizations together. Uh, I have already found a few resources that are people have kind of been flabbergasted by. Wait, there's one state resource right now that will help people apply for programs and economic programs, and they won't even get charged for it. The state reimburses the, that agency entirely.
Okay. Ms. Mealy.
I think Kevin's point is, and, and we've said it for years, um, on, you know, on city council and, and on the part of the administration that we need to be a bit more proactive about helping people visualize the benefits to operating a business in the city. And we also obviously need to get a bit more proactive about visualizing benefits that we could offer at little or no cost to, um, the taxpayers only because as we've just been discussing ad nauseam, um, we don't have the funds to do that. So, so yes, Kevin, I think you're right. I, I don't know. I had suggested at one point and it still strikes me as somewhat appropriate, but maybe there should be some sort of like marketing committee or something like that within the city. Um, I don't know if that's something anybody would want to consider, but it seems it might get more of the attention it deserves if we actually dedicated some, some folks from the administration and some folks from council to a
Yeah.
committee that met, you know, quarterly or something to discuss that.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments for Kevin? Continue, sir.
I've spoken with a lot of taxpayers these past two and a half years, and I can only think of a few that actually look forward to paying taxes. The sad fact of the world is that we have problems with our taxes. And like most things in the world, they don't get solved unless they're talked about. The city can't continue piling its financial burden onto real estate owners. We can't keep waiting for Harrisburg to update a tax cap from eighteen years ago. And we can't keep letting the taxpayers that are doing the right thing hold the bag for those that aren't. I will continue to work diligently for our residents and ensure that whatever I do, my power to diversify our revenue. So we do not always look up to the residents to pick up the bill. I'm only one person in office of three and I cannot do this alone. I look forward to working another year with everyone in the administration and the city and our public for this massive task. This concludes my speech.
Thank you, Kevin. Any, any additional comments, questions, thoughts on any dialogue from Mr. Mackey? Mr. Pelizzi, looks like you do.
Kevin, I appreciate you making the presentation and getting the information out there and publicly making everybody aware of just exactly where we're at. The fact that you've gone above and beyond with, with your collections for two years in a row now, uh, there's no arguing it. You can't argue the fact that he's collected more than than they even figured for, for two years in a row. So just keep doing what you're doing. I appreciate every, I appreciate all of it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're here.
Adam, I do have a que, not a question. Uh, Kevin, I do know that the Business Association has done some programs over the, you know, the last couple of years, and maybe it would be who've uh, us to maybe get involved in some of those programs that they bring up. Um, and they are, the Business Association does try to, you know, make sure their businesses that are, you know, look at our city first. We also have the chamber, you know, um, of course, the chamber goes after the big boys. They don't go after the small mom and pops that, that make the, um, the downtowns look very, um, very comforting. I, I think that's the word I want to say. Um, so, you know, but I think, you know, I, what you're saying, Kevin, is I think there's more of us that should work together and hand in hand and try to make our city better.
There, there's thirty thousand people in this city and close to forty three thousand in the surrounding area total. Um, we should have a way to organize all these different efforts that are going throughout the entire area and at least try to pull in as many state and federal resources as possible. Again, my, my whole goal is to ensure that, uh, we bring in as much outside of revenue in as possible. Uh, if we have enough applications going to Harrisburg and DC, hopefully they'll just give us our own, uh, own grant.
You're here. Any other, um, comments, questions, thoughts for Kevin before we go into his resolutions? Okay, Kevin, thank you for the, um, collections presentation, um, dialogue and, uh, good work for sure. Um, let's move to item six, resolution exonerating treasurer from collection of twenty twenty four real estate taxes. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mackey.
This resolution exonerates the city treasurer from the collection of the twenty twenty four real estate taxes. This past year, we did not collect one point one million dollars, eighteen thousand and forty one cents. They would take a dollar. Um, and this is to be exonerated from my collection and turned over to the Tax Claim Bureau. Between this resolution and Adam, if you don't mind, I'll just go ahead and include that with the second one there since they're kind of together.
Include what?
Um, the uncollected revenue getting turned over to the Tax Claim Bureau because this, one exonerates me and the other one just turns it over to the Tax Claim Bureau for collection.
You mean approving both resolutions together?
Well, I'm, I'm just talking about them both at the same time, so.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Sorry, I, I wasn't sure what you were getting at. Sure.
Oh, no, that's, that was it.
Okay, cool. Sorry. Um, any comments or questions for Kevin um, on item six and I guess really item seven, even though we'll go on that here in a minute? Okay. Um, here you can see none then on item six. Um, Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi. Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, motion passes six zero. We'll move to item seven, resolution for uncollected city twenty twenty four real estate taxes. There are motion in a second.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Anything to add, Mr. Mackey?
Nope.
Any additional comments, questions for Mr. Mackey on item seven? Hearing seen none. Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes six zero. Kevin, thank you for, um, all of this. Thanks for your work and, uh, hope for to work with you in twenty twenty five.
Thank you.
We'll move to item eight, resolution authorizing an MOU between the city of Williamsport and Habitat for Humanity. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Fessler, good evening.
Good evening. Actually, uh, the next two items on the agenda go hand in hand, so I will simplify, um, them both together if that's all right with you.
Sure.
Habitat for Humanity is entered into a subrecipient agreement with the city that we approved at the end of last year for us to provide funding for the homes that they're building on Scott Street. And as part of that project, they are required to do an environmental review. So they are contracting with Cetacog to perform the environmental review, but the city of Williamsport is required to serve as the responsible entity for that environmental review because it is our home funds that are requiring the environmental review to be done. So this has been reviewed and approved by Austin. The city will enter into an MOU with Habitat and a PSA with Cetacog to accomplish this environmental review. Habitat for Humanity will pay for the environmental review. It won't be a cost to the city, but it will be an eligible, reimbursable expense to their project that we can pay for with our home funds.
Thank you very much. Um, are there any comments, questions on the e- either resolution really, um, for Ms. Fessler? Okay, um, then the vote for item eight, Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes six zero. Item nine, resolution authorizing a professional administrative services agreement between the city and Cetacog. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Anything to add, Mrs. Fessler?
No.
Any comments, questions from members? One item nine. Okay, here you see none. Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, yes. Motion passes six zero. Item ten, resolution of the city of Williamsport authorizing the repayment of HUD funds related to monitoring findings. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, Ms. Fessler. The floor is yours again.
Great, thank you. The repayment of these funds was discussed in the twenty twenty five budget session. One hundred thousand dollars was budgeted in the finance department's budget for the total repayment of ninety nine thousand, eight hundred ninety six dollars and thirty six cents.
Thank you very much. This was reviewed in finance as well. Anything to add, Mr. Allison?
Um, not really. Um, we, we did our discussions uh, last year as, uh, Ms. Fessler said, um, we asked our questions then, um, and um, I asked, uh, if anything had changed and nothing has, so um, I think that kind of ties it up as far as I'm concerned.
Excellent, Mr. Allison. Any additional comments, questions for members? Okay. Ms. Mealy.
I think just to be clear on this, Ms. Fessler, obviously this is, um, kind of a one and done expenditure slash repayment that won't be echoed again until in, until HUD audits us if they find anything to be a miss, which we hope obviously with the services from Cetacog won't happen. Um, and this is, I, I would also say I believe we hadn't been audited in thirty years.
Correct.
Um, so relatively peanuts amount compared to the amount of, um,
Yeah.
HUD funding that we've spent over the past thirty years.
Yeah.
Yes.
That was all.
Thank you. Any additional comments, questions? All right, um, on the vote, Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move to item eleven, resolution for various insurance needs. Is there a motion in a second? So moved.
Second. Good evening.
Ms. Livermore, good evening.
Um, the resolution you have before you tonight is for the renewal of various insurance policies, um, for twenty twenty five. Um, we did discuss this in the finance committee. Uh, we went over that the only large increase that you see here is for the auto and that's due to the newer fire trucks that we just received. So, um, the insurance, of course, is more on a more expensive fire truck. So, um, really the other changes are just very minimal. Um, annual percentage changes. We, we are using the same insurance companies that we were using last year. Um, at the end of twenty twenty three, we did a, an RFP and went through and revamped all the insurance companies that we were using. We found a very good savings in our, um, workers comp. And we were happy with the services that we got from them in twenty four, so we stayed with the same insurance companies. We, they were lower prices and we, they, we had good, um, dealings with all of them. So we did not do an RFP this year.
Um, this also went to finance, Mr. Allison? Anything to add?
Good. Um, not really, other than, excuse me, um, insurance, uh, of every stripe is going up through the roof every year. Um, it's just a fact of life right now. And, uh, so it, it affects, um, it did affect, um, uh, that area, but, um, what, what, um, one thing, uh, Mrs. Livermore, that did, um, did we discuss the, the, uh, amount that was saved by changing, uh, the workman's comp?
Um, that amount was saved in twenty twenty four. So in twenty three, we had travelers and we went to NCOVA in twenty four. So we're still using NCOVA now. So our, our charges are still around the same as they were in twenty four, but it was, I, I don't have the numbers right now, but it was a good amount that we saved changing from the travelers to NCOVA.
Okay, um,
But I can get those numbers for you.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. Um, I didn't, uh, I forgot to ask that, um, the other day. So, okay, thank you.
Ms. Mealy.
Um, yeah, just, I think to kind of follow up on that line of questioning, um, is our broker still Gallagher?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and are we putting out an RFP for insurance brokers at all in any, anytime in the future?
Not in twenty five. If that's, you know, something you guys would like to do, we can definitely discuss. I think I'm not positive if, when they put the RFP out, if they put it out for brokers, um, in twenty three. I'm not sure how that was because that was, I believe Molly did that. Um, but I can double check and, you know, if that's something you guys would want to discuss, we can discuss for twenty, to go into twenty six.
I just think it wouldn't be unwise. I remember I was part of the RFP process where we chose Gallagher. And that was actually when Gabe Campana was still there. So that was.
So it's been at least, at least six or seven years.
Yeah, and, uh, and, um, not that we've been at all dissatisfied with Gallagher's service. I think Kevin's had a great job. But I know at the time that we kind of put all of the city's insurance broker needs with Gallagher just because we were trying to find a sort of a simple solution and, uh, you know, we had discussed even at the time sort of wishing that we could break things out so that we could work perhaps with a local company as well as with Gallagher and achieve, you know, a combination of the, the sort of savings and some of the offerings that a larger company can bring as well as supporting some of our local businesses. So I, you know, um, I, I don't know if the administrations looked at it. I certainly didn't hear about it if we did, um, if we, if we RFP'd the broker, but I think it wouldn't be a, a bad thing to do. Just it's sort of a fair thing to allow everybody a fair shot, you know?
Yeah.
Um, and that's, you know, inevitably in terms of an RFP of actual insurance coverage, we're going to wind up working with a bunch of multinationals because that's insurance coverage, but the, the RFP for, for brokers would have the potential to impact our local economy and that I think would be a good thing.
Yeah.
Um, uh, that said, um, what did we budget in twenty four? I was just in the process of looking it up.
I do not have those numbers. I didn't write them down.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, is this over or under what we budgeted?
Um, I believe we had this at budget time. So I, yes, I believe that we had, uh, these numbers at budget time. So like an estimated around about these. So I think we're good.
All right, awesome. Good. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions?
Um, if I could just follow up on that conversation about, uh, Gallagher, I did, um, a few years ago um, broached the idea of RFPing, uh, with the administration. And at that time, um, there wasn't, uh, it wasn't a, an inclination to do that. So, um, I think it's time. Thank you.
I, I, I think it would be inappropriate time to do that here sometime in the next year or so. Um, like I said, we've, we've, we've had a, a very good run with Gallagher and this is not a, a reflection on them. I just, uh, um, you know, sometimes you can achieve savings that way. And if nothing else, I think you simply offer it to a wider field of individuals.
Here, here. Any other comments or questions? Okay, um, we'll call the vote. Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz. Mrs. Katz. Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes five zero.
I was unmuted. I'm sorry, Adam. I say yes.
Motion passes six zero, no problem, Bonnie. We'll move to item 12, resolution, Jamie, thank you, sorry. We'll move to item 12, resolution authorizing the purchase of two Ford F-350 Super Duty pickup trucks utilizing ARPA funds. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Livermore, good evening. If by chance, in Dropbox, these are mixed up, these next couple, my apologies, when I was putting the packet together Thursday evening, I got a little confused on these, so I will apologize in advance if that is the case. I don't think it is, but Mr. Livermore, the floor is yours.
Good evening, members of council. What you have before you is a resolution authorizing the two purchases of two F-350s and one F-600 utilizing ARPA funds in the amount of $263,559.59. These trucks will be one of the 350s we're replacing 2012 GMC in our fleet right now, the other one will be replacing a 2011 GMC, and the F-600 replacing 2008 F-550. This was reviewed by Austin and it did not go to any meeting. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Livermore. Any comments, questions on item 12 by members? Pretty straightforward. We kind of went through this with final allocations last year. Ms. Mealy?
The only question I have about these items is, what's the, when do we expect these vehicles to land? Is there still such a heavy?
So the F-600 hopefully here in the next three weeks, and the two F-350s probably within the next month or two.
Okay. Well, I meant, even looking across all three of your items, will all of those things be arriving within the next couple of months?
I believe the, that that is going to be around July, and the other one is going to be here in the next few weeks, hopefully.
Okay.
Yeah, I ordered that. Well, we'll go through that.
It's okay.
Well, yeah, and then next question. All of these items, I know that in the ARPA discussions that we were having, we were very interested in getting these funds allocated on vehicles that would need to be purchased before '26. All of these are vehicles that we are actually in need of in streets and parks right now.
Right, yeah, so I mean, these are in the capital projects to being actually purchased. I believe within the year, I think the idea was to get them out a year early, cut that cost in the capital projects down, so we're not saving, so we can save some money out of that.
Okay, I'm just trying, I guess.
Yeah, these are, these are all vehicles that we have originally that we need to replace eventually, yes. It's not adding any new.
No, 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 that wasn't what I was implying. I guess I just wanted to make sure that we were kind of maxing out the equipment that we had and not replacing, not replacing anything, you know, since we have two years to kind of utilize the rest of this funding, not replacing anything that didn't need to be replaced yet, I suppose. Effectively costing ourselves money somewhere down the road. But it seems as though they were all set to be, my recollection was all the public works vehicles were set to be purchased in the '25 budget year anyway, right? Okay.
Thank you, Wes. Any other comments or questions, Mr. Pulizzi?
Just one, and Scott, I think I already asked you this. Was there a reason why you went with Ford over Chevy?
One, obviously, cost right now, Ford is showing a decline in the other dealers that we'd have, but I'm trying to get, one of the things too, I'm trying to get all the same fleet. Right, so a lot of my 250 trucks or the Chevy 2500s or GMCs that I have, I'm trying to rotate them through and get 350, so I have all the same parts on my stockroom to keep everything the same. My big fleet is all switch, going to be switched over to Freightliner, so we're cutting all the same because there's, you know, you need scanners and certain equipment to have some of this stuff, and you know, when I get a scanner for my Freightliners, I only have to buy the one scanner versus all the other dealers I'd have to deal with, so I'm trying to get everything the same, so we have everything.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing, seeing none. Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes six zero. Item 13, resolution authorizing the purchase of 2025 ODB 25 cubic yard truck mounted debris collector utilizing ARPA funds. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Livermore.
Good evening again, resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2025 ODB D225 or 25 cubic yard leaf, it's a, it's a leaf truck utilizing ARPA funds in the amount of 336,955. The, this truck will be replacing a 2010 truck that we have in our fleet right now, so this is going to upgrade this, so this will be good for the next 15 years. We purchased this, you know, I just, I was thinking, I didn't say who purchased, we got the word purchase in the F-350s to put it on, it was Stucky Ford out of Mechanicsburg. And this dealer is Stevenson Equipment. This did, went through, this was reviewed by Austin and didn't go to any meeting. Any questions?
Any comments or questions on item 13 by members? Okay. Hearing and seeing none then, Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion passes six zero, and then item 14, resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2025 Altech chip dunk truck utilizing ARPA funds. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Livermore.
What you have before you, resolution to purchase a 2025 Altech dump truck, it's a, what this is, utilizing ARPA funds in the amount of 245,900 or $798. What this truck is, is a, it's a, it's a it's an aerial truck for our forester to go throughout the city and trim trees. Right now, we have one. It is a 2006 right now, so that will be replaced by that. This one, obviously, is a little newer, has, I can get a little further, it's a little bit bigger. The previous one we have right now, the one we have right now is a 60 foot, this one will reach out to 75 feet. If any of you guys want to get in it, feel free, come down, we'll put you in it.
Up on that this summer.
I ain't getting it. This was reviewed by Austin and didn't go to committee. Any questions?
Any, any questions for Mr. Livermore? Okay.
I mean, that sounds like a fun party to get on.
That's sounding like a fun party, I agree. I agree. Mrs. Katz, you have a question?
Ah, yes, Scott, I mean, this is after the fact, but how did the leaf pickup go this year? Were there any problems?
No. No, not too bad, just about the same as every year.
Okay. Okay.
We suck them up.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, I mean, I, we didn't have any major issues, so.
That's good. We appreciate you. We appreciate you doing that. Any other comments or questions on the item? So the ARPA window is closed, I'll just extend some thanks to Jamie, Scott, with a lot of the final stuff we did, it was a lot of work you both did, and then even after the fact, a lot of the compliance stuff to kind of button up loose ends to make sure that we didn't lose this money with final allocations, just extend my gratitude and thanks for your hard work and helping us through that. It's very much appreciated. Let's call the vote. Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion passes six zero. Scott, thank you very much, sir. We'll jump to item 16, resolution authorizing Bureau of Police to purchase five police vehicles. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Assistant Chief Bolt, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. What you have before you today is a resolution authorizing the purchase of five Dodge Durangle police pursuit rated vehicles from New Holland Auto Group in New Holland, PA, and the cost to outfit each of the vehicles by 10-8 Emergency Vehicle Services, also of New Holland, PA, for a total of $254,957.10. Of this amount, $241,856.70 is to be allocated from the American Rescue Plan Fund Act, and the other 13,000 will be from our vehicle purchase funds. This will give us two 2024 marked units, two 2024 unmarked units, and then we'll have one 2025. So this is going to be good. This is also a CoStars contract, so we don't have to put it out for bid, and what this is going to do, this is going to help us replace three of our patrol vehicles that are now out of warranty, as well as we have two unmarked vehicles that we utilize that have over 100,000 miles. Those are going to be going too.
Thank you, sir. This did go to finance. Anything to add, Mr. Allison?
Um, not really. We were fortunate that we could get 2024 V, brand new vehicles, but the brand new 2024 vehicles at a cheaper price than 2025, obviously, so we did save some money there. Other than that, these are items we discussed previously.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Any comments, questions for members? Ms. Mealy?
I, I thought chiefs, that we had a general policy of doing three vehicles a year for the police.
That's what my recommendation is to don't go any less than three, to keep our, to keep the cycle going, to keep the fleet up to date, but it's not a policy as of yet.
I guess what I'm saying is, I mean, I do think that replacing three a year is a good number to go for, but why then are we doing five this year?
Because we're able to utilize the ARPA funding, and it catches us up then, because over the last three, now going on four years, we had a dilapidated fleet, now we actually got it to where it needs to be. So if we stay on pace and we keep our three minimum each year, just like, wow, we should be, we should be good, and then we won't have to catch up like we did.
So we're going to, so we will need to budget three more cars next year.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, yes.
Okay. And these, just from my understanding, what, as a person who's driven a vehicle with substantially more than 100,000 miles on it, why is it dangerous for the unmarked vehicles to have over 100,000?
It's not necessarily dangerous, but you're looking at a vehicle that's used 24/7 versus one used as from a civilian. So those vehicles are being used over and over, and sometimes not turned off for a 24-hour period.
100,000 miles on a police vehicle is way different than 100,000 miles on a regular civilian vehicle.
Well, I assume the unmarked are used the same as the marked. I sort of assumed that the unmarked are not as heavily used as the marked vehicles.
Heavily used, but they have, and these ones that have 100,000 miles, they are much older models because they were the unmarked, so they, they're older than even the other ones that would have 100,000 miles on them, so they're starting to get to the point where there's body issues and other issues that need to be repaired.
Got it. Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a little question on that. By purchasing five now, I guess, when we get to the, when, when, when this group of vehicles gets to the end of their lifecycle and we go to replace them, are we going to need to replace five one year, or will we be managing through this to flatten this out so we can maintain that consistency of three?
It's my belief that this is going to help manage that, so this is replacing ones that we, these two other extras are ones that we've been putting off, to be quite honest. So the marked vehicles are the ones that absolutely are priority because those are the ones that are driven more and more and more, and we want to keep those within warranty. So what this does gives the opportunity for some of these older unmarked ones that are not obviously in warranty anymore, to get them refreshed, same models as the marked cars, and to get them to be commensurate with the rest of the fleet.
Thank you, and then a additional question. Scott Livermore's kind of thought process made me think about this, so early on in my tenure, I remember there being a number of different models and makes. How, is that still the case? Have we shifted from that? And I asked that because I agree with Scott's rationale in kind of the management cost savings consistency you obtain. Where, where is that with the police department?
So I think it's a good thing. For a while, we had, you know, we had Fords, we had Chevys, and we had Dodges at the same time. We're at the point now where we have basically almost throughout the entire fleet, they're all Dodges, which means that it's easier to work on, it's easier for the scanner equipment that's extra, and things are more interchangeable. Matter of fact, by keeping it this way, we're able to even save some more money by transferring in those marked vehicles, some of the equipment from the ones that we're, we're getting rid of, and we can move that into the other, which gives us another significant cost savings on top.
Got you. No, that, that's, that's great. We're a lot closer, if not there, compared to maybe five years ago or so, so that's great. Okay, any other, thank you for that very much. Any other comments or questions?
Adam, I do.
Yes, Mrs. Katz.
Chief, I'm just inquiring, mind would like to know, how are we doing with the police vehicles with the brick roads that they come out of? Is that more wear and tear on the cars, or are you dealing with that in a different way?
I don't really have any information about how the vehicles are doing on the brick roads. My guess is that all, it's going to do same as all the other cars out here. The brick roads are rough on every vehicle.
I was just, you know, curious.
People, I know what she's doing.
Just inquiring if there was more wear and tear, because I know it's also that way with regular vehicles at times. And I know, you know, are some of these vehicles at the train museum? That's why I was asking this.
Yeah, there, there, most of them are patrol vehicles, so they're being utilized by the officers on shift that are at our headquarters.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other comments or questions for members? Mr. Pulizzi.
I'm sorry, I have to ask. Are they at least Hemis?
Yeah, they all are, except I believe the, the new versions now in 2025 are becoming twin-turbo V6s. So we're also trying to utilize to make sure that we have all the same engine components and things of that by getting all the, there's many of the 2024s and before, there's, we can't, they're all going to be the, the V8s.
Okay.
Unfortunately, coming, we're going to have to change as everybody else is with the modernization of these vehicles, so we'll hold off as long as we can.
I'm, I'm just happy to hear that we're getting Hemis, so I'll be signing up for more ride-alongs.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing, seeing none. I'll call the vote on item 16, sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey. Yes. Mr. Pulizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion passes six zero. Item 17, resolution authorizing professional services agreement between the Williamsburg Bureau of Police and Center for Community Resources for the Co-Responder Program. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Assistant Chief Bolt, floor is yours again, sir.
Thank you. So this is basically a revision to the agreement that we passed back in November. There's been very little change. After we had passed that, CCR had some changes that they were interested in through our finance department, so really, the only change is in, if you guys do have that contract before you, it's in part two, the compensation part, where the, the amount in 2.1, where the payment is, the amount is now not to exceed 85,000 instead of 70,000, to make sure it covers some of the extra expenses. The rate went from 2074 to 2174, that was a typo before with the salary, and in 2.3, it just changed that MHCR will have, the co-responder will have benefits, pay time off per diem and any other compensation, but that's provided by the contractor, obviously not by the city. Again, this is all still within the PCCD grant that we have, and all of these were covered under our original cost structure, so we just had to change a couple of things to make sure that everything stays with it. And I'll open up for any other questions.
Any other questions for members, Ms. Mealy?
Just so I understand the cost structure, it wasn't an issue to add a 15, to add $15,000 extra?
No.
The grant is flexible in terms of how much we can spend.
Yeah, we actually had budgeted for over that. After we had had our initial meetings, we said, this is what we need. Yeah, we actually had budgeted for over that. After we had had our initial meetings, we said this is what we needed for the salaries, but this was just for the extra um, for desperate, few things of that nature that were needed. Okay.
That's fine. It, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me. I was just kind of wondering what the elements of the grant were that allowed us that kind of flexibility. Um, okay. Uh, good. And we have already, we, we know already the person we'll be working with, right?
She's actually been working, yeah, she's been with us for a couple of months.
Okay, and how's it?
Yes, it's been very successful. Uh, we're hoping to be, be able to update um, this, this coming spring.
Good. Is she, is she working with us forty hours a week or what is that?
It is forty hours a week.
She's actually out on the, out like with officers forty hours a week. Yeah, that's impressive. I would have assumed there'd be some kind of paperwork lag or something like that, but no, that's, that's good. All right, well, we'll look forward to an update on it. Thanks, Tony.
Any other comments or questions for members? Okay. Hearing seen none on item seventeen, Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion passes six zero. Uh, Assistant Chief Bolt, thank you very much, sir. Um, but my notes that takes us to item nineteen, if anybody else. Um, can, if I'm missing something, let me know. Um, item nineteen, except for filing, we have the public works meeting minutes from November fifth and December third, two thousand and twenty-four. Controllers report from October twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments, questions, modifications to anything we are accepting for filing? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, yes. Motion passes six zero. Um, item twenty announcements, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be on Thursday, January thirtieth. Um, twenty twenty-five here at Trade and Transit two, third floor, seven PM. Um, upcoming meetings, Tuesday, January twenty-first, sixteen, thirty PM, Harb. Um, Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, eleven thirty AM, Public Safety, one PM Finance, two thirty PM Public Works, all the, um, Wednesday. January twenty-ninth, nine AM, economic revitalization depend, all depending on what's going on and what's on the agenda. Um, Thursday, January thirtieth, seven PM, our next city council meeting. Um, I'll announce, we're going to have an executive session following related to uh, matters of litigation and contract negotiation. Um, open floor for any comments, the end of the meeting for members of city council. Any comments from members of the administration? Any comments from members of the public? And nobody from the news media is here. I'll take a motion and a second for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Adjourned. Thank you all very much. We'll see you in.